I call this meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education to order. Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Kobel.
Here.
Ms. Pepler.
Here.
Mr. Register. Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
Okay, and this is a work session, so I don't know Superintendent Dixon if you'd like to introduce or kick things off?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So tonight we have our new CTE director, Dewayne Callender, affectionately called Brad, who's going to lead in this presentation for us tonight on CTE programs and the future of the CTE program.
Thank you very much. My first speaker today, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about CTE. CTE is near and dear to my heart. It's hard for me to sit down, honestly, to talk. I'll do my best to stay here. We have a great representation of folks here tonight that are also passionate about career and technical education. Career tech is something I feel passionately about, and primarily because I've been a CTE student, a CTE administrator, a teacher, and I'm a parent of CTE students. So I've seen the full gamut of it. And I'm a zealot when it comes to thinking career tech can make a difference. And I know it does. I'm glad to be able to talk about it tonight. CTE in Ohio, career tech in Ohio itself works. I am CTE, this is CTE. Ninety percent plus graduation rate for all students enrolled in career tech, four years. Ninety-eight percent when you get as high as five years. It works. It makes a difference. Those students stay engaged, stay involved. Our own students, our own report card, ninety-three point three percent graduated in four years. This is based on the most recent report card that came out, which you have a copy of in front of you. It's on a yellow type of paper. Also on that, we look at our graduation rates being ninety-three point three percent for four years, ninety-six point six percent for five years. Both very impressive. Dual enrollment, eighty-three percent, very impressive. Advanced placement participation, thirteen percent. An area for growth. Post-program placement, ninety-four point six percent. That means those students are in careers for which they trained. Very impressive. Our technical skill attainment is an area we're going to need to work on. And we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. And that is only at seventy-nine point eight percent for the participation rate, and only fifty-four percent for those who actually earned those technical skills, which means they took the test specified by the state and passed it. There's a huge skills gap in this country. There are over three million jobs that are unfilled for skilled workers. Three million jobs that are unfilled. We have the ability here to fill them locally, to fill them in the state, and to fill them in this country with some of the programs that we offer. Cleveland Heights University Heights is part of a tri-hights consortium consisting of three districts, Shaker Heights, Warrensville Heights, and Cleveland Heights University Heights. Three, all three schools participate, some with students, some with facilities, and some with participation in our special needs programs as well. The idea behind this program is specifically four different things. Number one, career connections. Define the connections, to expose students to multiple entry and exit points. That is, they can come into a program and exit a program. They can look for skill attainment, they can look to go to college. It depends on what their personal goals are. We also are looking to develop local business partnerships that will also allow for these connections to students to come in and come out of programs. Next year, we'll be offering a full slate of middle school programs, sixteen and seventeen. Tonight, you'll be looking at a waiver for this year, but for next year, we're going to be looking at a full slate of programs that mirror those, with the exception of two programs, those we offer at the high school. Those will also be offered at our, also at Shaker Heights and also Warrensville. Secondly, career preparation. Our students will leave here prepared to work, prepared to go to school, prepared to follow whatever it is they choose to follow, whether it is military, whether it is a four-year school, a two-year school, an apprenticeship, whatever it might be. They will leave here ready, regardless of what district they are attending. We will also promote those pathways that are lined with high-performing jobs. Those are jobs that are part of that three million dollar, excuse me, that three million job skills gap. They will be ready to participate in those jobs. There will be jobs available for them. To start tonight, I've invited a few of my students, my students, I take a personal interest in them. I know their teachers would probably call them their students as well. But we're going to go ahead and take a break as we move through my presentation to hear what they have to say about career tech. Because truthfully, when it comes down to it, it really doesn't matter what I say. Doesn't matter whether or not I say it's great or not. What matters is whether or not they believe it and what they're doing with it. So we're going to kind of go alphabetically. Now, their presentations, they were given kind of fast and loose rules on what I want, because I want them to say what they want to say, the good, the bad, the ugly, whatever they believe. Well, some of you. At that end, we're going to start with our cosmetology program, and I'm going to have them come up, introduce themselves, and pass out the materials, and share with each one of you. And you can stop and ask them questions. They're prepared for this, because they are CTE students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how's everybody?
Hi, good.
Thank you.
My name's Michaela Rouse. I'm a senior in Miss P's cosmetology course. Right now, I'm passing out, well, my assistant here is passing out the daily scroll, and we read it every day in COS, so please look that over while I.
Right. Would she feel more comfortable if she sat in a chair?
You want to sit?
You want to sit?
No, I want to sit.
You're good? Okay.
So as he's getting the rest of the mannequins, for a whole overview of cosmetology, it has really, I've learned a lot in the past two years, and I'm just started my senior year. And I can tell you right now, I'm already excited to jump in into the actual work field and applying my skills that I've learned in the past two years in cosmetology. Right now, we are currently doing internships, and this is the first year. It's mandatory for cosmetology and career prep, I believe. And I'm really excited because I've gotten to meet my boss already, and she's been impressed on the skills that I've learned, that Miss P has taught me, and I'm sure the rest of cosmetology, in the past two years. I've learned a lot of, like, really good work ethic in the two years in cosmetology, such as clocking in with my hours and counting them up, making sure, you know, everything is aligned. So by the time, you know, I'm ready to get my license, nothing is skipped over, and I could take that skill and apply it to when I actually do have a job, and I clock it on time, being on time, you know, being sure I'm there to retain all the information that I can. Also, with skills in practical cosmetology, a lot of people don't know, but we're like, kind of like doctors in a weird way. People come to cosmetology to look good. We do it. A lot of people don't think of it that way. We have some anatomy and chemistry in cosmetology. And with that being said, I am excited to apply a lot of the knowledge when I go to state board to get my cosmetology license and move on into the career path that I hope to, you know, enter after I graduate. Here, I brought like some mannequins, for example, of what we've been learning. A couple of these, well, three of these, we learned in our junior year. Last year, this here is the finger wave, which is one of the first things the juniors this year will learn when we get into styling, after we break from bookwork. This is one of the first hands-on things that they will actually learn. They're kind of difficult, but they're hard. With that being said, there's a lot of different chapters and hairstyles and things that we learn that are very difficult. But Miss P, our instructor, she gives us time to work on them, and she'll give us mock practicals, so when we're ready for state board, we're not unprepared, we're not, you know, feeling like we didn't, we're not ready enough for state board. So by the time we get on that bus in June, we're ready to go and get our license and move on with our career path. Also, right here, this binder, this will really, this huge thing right here will be your best friend in cosmetology. I'm sure it's my best friend. This has done a lot. In the two years, this is a constant study for it. So in the two years, you know, you learn notes, you go over vocab, learn over practical notes, certain things are in chapters, how to follow a guide in haircutting. I didn't even know there was a guide in haircutting, really. For our end-of-the-unit tests that we get, we'll save our notes in this, and this helps a ton. There's so much in here, collected from junior and senior year, that I assure you will help you so much. It's ridiculous. It's vital. It's a vital tool to absolutely have. I would definitely, if anybody knows anybody that's going to start COS, interested in being in COS, they should definitely have this right here, because it'll only help them. For, in closing, cosmetology has really helped me in a way to understand different, you can go into a course and think you know everything about it. You can go into something thinking you know everything about it until you're in it, and you're just like, whoa. Bookwork, there's so many medical terms, anatomy, chemistry, science, work, period, that I didn't even think that would come with cosmetology. Different procedures and techniques and, you know, measurements and testing that you won't get in a regular day-to-day course. And I think that's why cosmetology is great for career prep, because a lot of people do not know what goes into it. And I think it's cool that it's offered in high school, so that when people graduate, they actually have a full-on idea, and when they go in, they don't miss out on a lot of information that they should have attained. And cosmetology is definitely, you know, it's, I'm really glad that I was one of that little, that last twenty-five, that twenty-fifth person, I got to the last slot, because I'm confident, I know by the end of this year, that everything I learned, I could apply with ease. And I thank Miss P for that, and the rest of my COS girls, honestly, because, you know, I'm really excited to apply a lot of the knowledge that I've learned a lot.
Good.
Thank you very much. Again, the state boards are not a joke. That's a very, very rigorous test. And COS is one of our programs that is oversubscribed year after year, which means that we have more applicants than we have slots. So it is a program that is highly in demand. It's also a field that's growing, according to the BLS. Speaking of another field that's in demand and growing, having spent time upstairs in the clinical health lab and getting older, I'm thankful that we've got students like this who are going to be coming up through the healthcare profession, who are going to be taking care of an aging population. It's a field that is booming right now, and it's going to continue to grow as we continue to age. And we'll get to you guys in just a minute. I kind of had to build you up, right? It's okay. I want to talk real quickly about what we're going to do with our oversubscribed programs, and how we get all of our programs oversubscribed. Does anyone mind if I use this one? Does that bother? Because I'd rather use this. Part of the things that we're looking at is marketing our programs. And our marketing is going to be very specific and very direct and very driven. I was over at Warrensville at the graphics imaging course, and I spoke with their instructors, spoke with the seniors over there. We've got a couple seniors over there right now. And I said, all I said to them was, you know, I'd really like a logo. And within ten minutes, they had all these ideas sketched out and all kinds of things, and they really want to go gangbusters on helping market this. Student-driven, student-led, makes sense with career tech. It makes sense to tie it all together, to make it real world, to make it tie together. Eighty-one percent of students who dropped out of high school said that if there was a real-world connection, that would have kept them in school. There's a real-world connection there. It makes sense. It does what it says it does. It's, the advertising fits it. So we're going to be direct with our marketing, and we're going to be relentless with it, too, because it's part of filling a need for all students. It's about opportunities.
Can I interrupt you?
You sure can.
Can you say more about who you are marketing to and what, why would you be marketing?
There are two prongs to marketing, internal and external. Okay, internal, and I'm going to talk a little bit about bias here, okay? We're dealing with, in career tech, we're dealing with some leftover bias from the nineteen-seventies and the early nineteen-eighties, where it was considered vocational programming was considered, I went to a joint vocational school, and everyone called it the joint. And that's where they sent everybody who wasn't going to go to college. It's just where you went. And so that stigma still is attached to career tech programs. It still is. You're not going to go to college, you go to career tech. So first part is overcoming that internal, that internal marketing. The other is the external piece of it, where we're selling not only to our parents, who have the same stigma to overcome, but also to our community and our business partners. Our business partners are chomping at the bit to get highly motivated, highly skilled employees. They need to find out where they can get them. So that's a big part of it. So internally and externally, that's what we'll be marketing to, students, parents, and business leaders.
Thank you. And I assumed as much, but I guess I'd also like to hear you talk a little bit about the, you said internally, marketing to students, but I'm assuming also marketing to, I think some of that stigma also might play out with other teachers and other, or with guidance counselors, or with the other adults internally in the district at times. Hopefully not often, but.
Wow, you went right to the elephant in the room, didn't you?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
That's my job.
Overcoming that is a very important piece. And I've actually got a structure for doing that. I'm working with an individual named Mark Perna. And Mark is, travels the country, and he happens to be in our own backyard, which is great. He's nationally known. The guy commands fifteen thousand dollars for a one-hour speech. I mean, he's phenomenal as far as career tech, about as far as connecting kids with the end of the line. And his big thing is overcoming those objections and explaining that it's not about the vehicle you use, but it's about getting there and the journey getting there. So we're going to take small groups of people, counselors specifically, we'll start with them, because that's where a lot of the disconnect happens, because they've got so much on their plates, they're doing so many different things, that a lot of times, you can't always get all those nuances covered. And we're going to get them training they need in getting the end objective seen. It's also going to be done with career tech teachers. They don't know this, because I just finished with the conversation with Mr. Perna at four-thirty today about this. So this is actually pretty timely. Mrs. Ghul, we need to talk about some money later. So, but there are going to be opportunities to overcome that. But it's done in small groups. It's done in small bit, bite-sized pieces. And it also goes all the way down to our elementary guidance counselors and our middle school guidance counselors. And part of that is what we started today, which Mrs. Ghul started today, which was looking at the career advising portion of it. Today, we met with the high school counselors, the high school administrators, and all those folks. Tomorrow, she's got a meeting with the middle school counselors and elementary counselors to talk about career advising, because it's now required in the state of Ohio to push it all the way down. And so that's a big part of that. I mean, it's structured all the way. They're going to get it from a lot of different angles. And the idea is not to push anybody in any one direction, but to provide opportunities for everyone. And that's what it comes down to. Career tech is an opportunity, just like going to college, AP is an opportunity. It provides you with a vehicle to get where you need to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, I lost my rhythm there for a second. Career readiness. Again, looking at the number of students who are obtaining industry credentials, that's a big one with us, because when they leave here, they leave with credentials. Mr. Porter's sitting back there, put your hand up. He's our auto tech instructor. I know I'm not supposed to acknowledge the audience, they don't exist right now, but he does. And he gives his students tests that gives them a certification that they leave with, that can get them a job, that can get them something that is marketable. You know, I don't care who you are, you've got to eventually, you're going to need to change the oil on your car. You're going to need someone to do that, all right? And there's actually more computing power in a lot of cars on the road today than the desktop sitting on your desk. So there's a lot of highly technical things they're doing, but they take a test to guarantee when they leave, they have that skill. Student certification, go on to national certifications. We're looking to add industry credentials for every program that leaves here. That's the idea. In fact, that's one of the new pathways to a diploma, class of 2018, is you can leave with credentials as part of your package for graduating. So we're working to do that right now. And increasing exit points with our students, giving them a place to go. And that's where these next three ladies, I'd like you to come on up. These are clinical healthcare, and they're going to talk about, they're going to talk about what clinical healthcare means to them, and what they're going to do with it. And we're going alphabetized. They told me before that L comes after. So, it comes before, but I thought COS would go first, because I saw the heads over there. So, ladies, who would like to go first?
Okay, so hi, my name is Mary Carter. I got interested in clinical health careers, so I really love helping people. And I really think it's amazing for me and two other students to, like, get, like, in this program, because it gives us the opportunity to really, like, meet people, to gel our shyness, and really, like, interact with other people that we're not, like, used to seeing every day. And my future goals are to become a nurse or a surgeon. And here go Kayla.
Hi, my name's Kayla Johnson. I'm from Cleveland Heights. But I was attracted to clinical health careers, because even as a kid, I knew, like, I was interested in health and helping others. So when I saw this program during, like, a career tech, like, activity where you go around and see all the different programs, I was immediately drawn to clinical health. My future goal is to eventually go into college and try to get my doctors in psychiatry.
Good evening. My name's Alyssa Hall. And the one thing that drove me to clinical health is, ever since, just like Kayla, since I was young, I loved, like, taking care of people. Like, I took care of my grandma, and every time she go on doctor visits, I always ask, like, oh, why is this? Why is that? Oh, how do you do this? How do you do that? Pretty sure Miss Baloo will tell you, ask like a million questions. But, yeah, my future goal is to just go to college. And mine is kind of twisted. Like, I thought I wanted to be a nurse when I first came in, but then I knew, like, when you go into the program, there's so many areas in a health program that no one knows about, and it's just so much. So I actually changed what I kind of wanted to do, because, like, I'm kind of like a debater and I like talking. So I kind of want to be, like, a nurse attorney. So when I go to college, I'll obtain two degrees, one in law and one in nursing. And a nurse attorney just basically just go up to the stand and just defend, like, patients and stuff like that, who need criminal help. And basically, clinical health, if you are really interested in the healthcare system, I suggest you go here. Because it's like, well, first, I'm more of a talkative person, but like, Mary, she's not a talkative person. And we got her together, and we're just like one big family. Miss Baloo is like mother nurse. But, yeah, I really love this class. So I just suggest you get into it if you like nursing. Thank you.
By the way, career tech students don't go to college. They've all three talked about advanced degrees. Career tech students do not go to college, according to the stigma. Ladies, thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're also looking, as we develop career readiness, to develop additional.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
You were talking about biases before, so what about the biases of four-year institutions? Do you have to fight with them at all regarding, if they look at a transcript, are they becoming aware of the importance of the courses that are in this program? Or is that, is that still an issue with, you know, that they need to see more of the traditional, more traditional courses?
It is not an issue like it was twenty years ago, because a lot of times, we have articulation agreements with all of, with higher education right now. We also have the availability of what are called C tags, which student automatically earns college credit that goes anywhere in the state of Ohio, any state school. So there's, right now, there's a vested interest in them, because they, you know what, you've got enough of those credits, you're already sophomore standing, we'd like to have you for the next three years. You've proven yourself. So the stigma is not so much there as it was, especially like for two-year institutions. And in fact, a lot of students are now nationally, starting at a two-year institution and then matriculating to a four-year, because it's cheaper. It's inexpensive. It comes down to money. We are one point two trillion dollars in debt with student loan. And that's obscene. And to be able to leave school with credits one year down, that's one year you don't have to pay for. And they're accepting them now, and they are inviting them with open arms.
Just to be clear about my question, as someone who didn't go that path and did go to a four-year college, every one of these students is better prepared than I was ever prepared to go to college.
That's good. Congratulations. It's part of it, real world, real world connection. Thank you. We're going to continue to develop those relationships with our business partners, with those partners for internship opportunities. And I've also, I've said several times to several people, I do have a secret weapon, and she's actually out there. That's Desiree Calguire-Mayer. Raise your hand, please, Desiree. Thank you. She is relentless, like a bulldog on a bone, when it comes to getting things done, as far as getting business partners contacted, as far as getting people involved in what we're doing here. She's also, she already spoken to the COS classes about internships that are paid partially by the state of Ohio. It's a great chance, they have to do internships anyway, why not get some money out of it, walk away with it. It's a great opportunity. So she is out there, she'll probably be talking to a lot of folks, and getting people connected to what we do here. And she is phenomenal. So thank you very much. I want to acknowledge her. She's very, she's back there, she's behind the scenes, but she does a lot of work, a lot of times on the phone. One of the other things that's always been a concern about career tech is program quality. How do we guarantee a good program? How do we guarantee that students are leaving with the things they need to leave to go be successful? How do we guarantee that? Well, one of the ways we're going to do that here is with a program audit, also in your little packet there. There's a little matrix, a rubric, as it were, CTE program audit. Every program is completing this audit. Every program is going through this. You see, it's pretty simple, zero to three. But it's all the things that matter in making a program exemplary. We want to move all of our programs from one end to the other. We've got some programs that are bumping up against that number three on some, but not all of them. Not everybody's exemplary in all the areas. Teachers are going to do an audit on themselves, and then we're going to have someone else do it on their program, someone independent, someone who actually has a vested interest in their program. One of their advisory members is going to look at auditing their program. So we produce a quality product, which is a student who's ready to go to work or go to school, period. And that's what they're doing now. And we're going to keep pushing till we get everybody one hundred percent there. Casey, did you have your student, is your student here? Oh, there she is. I didn't see her. Moving on down the alphabet, which I've gotten way out of line alphabetically, I would like to introduce our exercise science program. We're sticking with clinical health careers tonight, and exercise science is a booming area. I don't exercise or do science much, anyway, but.
Hi, my name is Cher Sanders. I'm in exercise science. What got me interested in the class is, I was trying to decide on what I wanted to do for my future career, and I didn't want to quite be a medical doctor. And then I got to see the different things that, like, the career fair, what they do in the class. And I was like, oh, this is interesting. And then the first year, we got to learn different things about the body, and I actually got to shadow our athletic trainer, and it was pretty cool. I got to see a few injuries. That was cool. But I like exercise science, because it's not just, you don't have to go into a field of, well, it's still healthcare, but you don't have to go into a field where you're dealing with people exactly. You can do other things where you're like, putting, like, you can be a dietitian, where basically you can just put together meal plans and send them to people. You don't actually have to deal with people. But then there's also, like, I, my career goal, I want to become a physical therapist. And that's actual, it actually has become a doctorate, so I would technically become a doctor. But it's like, I get to help people recover from injuries and get back their, their everyday skills somewhat to what it used to be. And like, I think that's pretty cool. Yeah, I like the class. It's like, it's still a learning environment, but it's different, because it's more hands-on. So it's like, you do the bookwork, but then you also get to go do it hands-on and apply it. So it's not like you're just learning something. So, yeah.
Additionally, as we're looking at program quality, we're looking at high-quality professional development that is career tech-focused for our teachers, to get them not only to be excellent educators, but also continue to maintain in their field. When you leave the field to go into education, you When you leave the field to go into education, you don't leave the field in which you were trained. You you don't. It's it's you continue. I know that, for example, Mr. Porter, I told him I was going to pick on him tonight a little bit because he's here. He is an ASE certified master mechanic. He has to recertify. He has to get our programs recertified. In order to do that, he has to make sure he keeps his schooling up. And it's not like it's a one-time shot. He knows everything there is to know about cars. Some of the stuff that he had to take in his original test a little while ago is no longer applicable. Um, they didn't have to worry about multiplexing and things like that back in whenever it was he started. That said, we have a program that um, is excellent year after year. And it's one that um, our students consistently are oversubscribed to, consistently do well at, consistently earn certifications. And it would be one of those programs that's bumping up against that three on each one of those those areas. That's criminal justice. And Commander Lemons has, he is he is titled, has sent us a representative tonight um, to speak directly to the excellence and the expectations he has for his program.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Jordan Hall and um, I'm a senior at Cleveland Heights and I take criminal justice. Um, I feel that our program, it it changes lives. That's that's all I have to say. And it's not even about the certifications that you earn. It's about the peace of mind you have leaving this class. It kind of changes the way you look at life. So yeah, it's a it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty great program for anybody, actually. You know, and you leave high school with OPADA certified, which means you can do security at the age of 18. You save about three to four grand. And you get uh, the certification that some people don't even get till they're like in their 20 or 30s. You leave his class with multiple FEMAs. We are required to have 10 FEMAs before we leave his class. And yeah, it's just, you just learn so much in this class. You learn, it's like when you hit college and you want to study uh, criminal justice, it's like you're already a head of the A-ball because it's everything we learn in this class is the same stuff you're going to learn in college. So it's kind of just like we're going to, you're going to breeze through college. It's getting us ready for college. Like I want to go for a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. It's like I know almost everything about this profession, you know? And um, this is a, this is just a class that means a lot to me because it kind of turned me around. And I feel that it can do the same to somebody else out there. And yeah, that's just a very beneficial and yeah, just a very beneficial program. Learn so much. And um, thank you. Have a good night.
Jordan, we need to do a commercial after this. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge all the teachers, CTE teachers that came tonight and show our support. Uh, they didn't have to be here. They chose to come here and I'm thankful they're here because what they do every day makes a difference. As we're looking at program developments and expanding, we're looking at expanding our existing offerings to include uh, some high-tech areas, including Project Lead the Way across the district, which would be Project Lead the Way Gateway and also Project Launch, which Project Launch goes all the way down to the elementary school with a prescribed engineering curriculum. It's about exploring, it's about growing, it's about knowing things. Um, we were fortunate to have um, a group of highly motivated, highly interested community members who came together uh, for the working group. And I know they were they were together primarily for the building project, but they have stayed together and they have given um, given CTE a real shot in the arm. And they've come up with a lot of suggestions that are very positive for program development, including uh, expanding our engineering program, including uh, adding culinary, which is near and dear to my heart. And that's not, that's not next year, but my son is a chef, so I think culinary is a very important thing. Um, we're looking at adding programs that speak to specific needs in this area. Uh, we've, we're going to begin conversations with some of our vendors, including Lincoln Electric, uh, they're right down the road. Welders, if you're a welder, you've got a job the moment you walk out the door. And if you're a good welder, you can name your price, especially with the oil boom. There's a lot of jobs available in that field. We're looking at adding uh, tourism. We're looking at adding uh, some theater classes. We're looking at adding some things that that speak specifically to our local market as well. And so stay tuned for those. Those will take a while to develop. They're not a flip to switch kind of thing, but our middle school programs are.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, sure.
So you'd, I forget what you just called. What was the relationship that you mentioned Lincoln Electric, a potential partner?
A potential partner.
A potential partner. So with that as an example, um, it, would it be possible to have a CTE class and program be housed completely at Lincoln Electric?
I don't.
Just as an example.
As an example, yes. That's always possible.
So the structure is there within the state certification program and with it, and there might be other models out there where we wouldn't necessarily have to house everything on in our facilities. A a program could be housed at a at a host site of a of a place like Lincoln Electric.
Yes, in fact, there are examples of that around the state where, uh, for example, a fire program is expensive.
Right.
And so there are programs where you can go and partner with, for example, another entity. So those programs do exist and that's a great way to look for creative creative opportunities.
Okay, thanks.
And we're, and if, and again, if there are opportunities, if there are options, if there's something someone comes up with, we love new ideas. And bring them. We invite them. We're also going to be looking at recognizing our students on a regular basis. We're going to have a Career Tech Student of the Month for each one of our districts, each one of them. And they will be recognized and they will be acknowledged for what they're doing, for the great things they are doing. We're also going to recognize one program a month. We're going to see them grow. And as the programs grow, as we expose things, the programs are going to grow. We're going to see some great things happen. Before I can do, do I have any other of my students here? Is that, did I go through my four? No, okay, good. I almost forgot about Jordan earlier. So we are going to continue to expand those. Now, I was over at Warrensville the other day and I did get an opportunity to to go through the building. And uh, they've they've got a lot of space and they're open and willing for anything we can expand into. So that was a very, that was a great conversation. I'm looking forward to having additional ones. And as I close tonight, before there, are there questions before I close?
I have to let you close.
Okay.
Just in case you can't cover my questions.
As I thought about this particular, this particular evening, as I thought about um, Career Tech, I thought about the strategic plan, because everything kind of comes back to that. It's all, all the arrows have got point back to that, because that's the direction we're going. And I thought about what we do. I thought about what Career Tech does, what these teachers do every single day. And I thought about how Career Tech fits into all of that. Goal number one, every student graduates ready to pursue college and career. I don't need to say anything more about what Career Tech does for that one. Goal number two, excellent education is provided to each student in every district, school and classroom. Just the availability of Career Tech as an option, as an opportunity, from career readiness all the way down to kindergarten, all the way through plus 12th grade plus, is an excellent opportunity for students. And we'll continue to develop our staff to make them even better teachers than they already are. Goal number three, parent, community partners are welcomed and fully engaged, supporting, enhancing student learning. We look for partnerships in Career Tech. That's part of what we do. We need jobs. We need our kids to have a place to go. We invite them in. We, we've got so many things cooking over here with partnerships. She's like juggling 15 balls at once, trying to keep them all in the air. We've got Mr. Porter developing relationships. We've got Ms. Pollard developing relationships, Ms. Baloo developing relationships, Ms. Graham developing relationships. They're all building relationships with the community, with their with their parents. We have parents who come in and say, you know what, I was a student in this program. I want my child in this program. Connection to the home. Make it relevant. Goal number four, CHUH, City School District attracts and retains caring, highly qualified staff with diverse experiences, background who work collaboratively. We don't get much more diverse as with our experiences than in Career Tech. I could pull each one of them up here. They would tell you the pathway they came to be a teacher here. I could tell you my pathway from being 1.9 GPA to being here. Career Tech did that. It's about opportunities. It's about getting the right people to teach the students what they need to know. Diversity. And finally, goal five, operations and resources. Have you been to the AutoTech Lab? You guys are loading up, doing the right thing for Career Tech and doing the right thing for students in this district. The new high school plan is amazing. It's amazing for this community. It's amazing for what's going to happen because of what's being done and invested back in this community. So CTE will help get all five of those goals to become a reality because it's what we do. CTE works. And I am CTE. Questions?
Yeah, uh, three. The first, first of all, it was a great presentation. Thank you so much for being here and for bringing this to us. You touched on this a little bit, but in terms of course offerings, do you feel that the path that we're taking to deciding what courses to offer is a reactive path, a proactive path, or a combination of the two?
It's a combination of the two. The courses, are you speaking of program development or are you speaking of course development? Because courses are part of programs.
Both.
Okay. We have a certain number of courses we can select within a program. The status that these are the courses you can pick. So that aside, um, is it reactive? By nature, it was reactive because it's what has been there. There are some anchor programs in every institution. And we have those anchor programs that will continue to be there. We've been proactive with some things. You look at Exercise Science, for example, that's moving, as Casey begins to move that out of where it is. You're talking about people becoming physical therapists, not not becoming trainers necessarily, but advancing on to advanced degrees. We're looking at uh, expanding, um, we look at cosmetology. It it's more than just doing hair. Uh, it's a lot more than that. And as these girls go forward, they take that skill with them, whether they use it to earn a living or they use it to pay for school, either way. So I would have to say it's a combination thereof, but we're going to be very, very forward-thinking. And I know the working group is pushing things and I know that they're out there motivating and and getting things going. And we've got an advisory group where we're assembling, as required by the state of Ohio, that's going to be very forward-thinking, that's going to challenge me. And and that's what we need.
And and just sort of answering a little bit my own question, I think in the past, sometimes we've looked at at uh, how popular a course has been to determine whether or not to continue with it, what path to take from there. Um, I think your, the suggestions you guys made tonight regarding marketing and having students market especially, which I completely support, um, I think that's a, that's a a variable that you have to sort of figure out how how that places in, when you're being reactive. Because if something is marketed better than something else, you know, is that the reason? What are the reasons? And so that's where the proactive part of looking at where jobs might be, not just now, but coming into the, going into the future. So I I support both both things. Um, my second, which is something you did talk about and it's sort of been a little bit of a pet peeve. I mean, no one, any disrespect in this, but I think the notion of working with guidance counselors, it's less a question, more a statement. I think that's an important piece of this, an extremely important piece of this. Um, and I think that, again, no disrespect to guidance counselors, but this isn't necessarily the way they were trained. Uh, my own personal opinion on it. Um, and so I think any help we can give our guidance counselors along those ways will be great for the CTE program, but great for our student, our entire student body. Which leads me to my third comment, which is, and I'm not sure how much you'll love this comment, but I'm going to say it anyway. The the CTE right now is somewhat of a standalone program, but arguably, every single one of our students, their end goal isn't to go to college. Their end goal is to be successful in a career, successful in life, successful in the world. Um, so arguably, what CTE offers is really something for all of our students. Um, so I wonder if we want to look at a broader picture of this than just, CT's, there's a, there's a defined program associated with it. I wonder if we need to be looking at a broader sense of how do we bring some of the CTE programming to our broader student body? Because what I said before was not a throwaway comment. I was not as prepared for college as the kids who are coming out of these programs. I mean, period.
Well, I'd like to respond to your comment if I may.
Please.
Uh, the the last one first.
Sure.
As 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 we looked out there, we looked at, um, you know, talking about career advising. And and now that we are, the state has mandated career advising from from kindergarten all the way up to grade 12, we're taking a totally different approach at that. And so it's going to open a lot of opportunities that maybe people, you know, maybe because of the blinders they were wearing, intentional or otherwise, um, they're going to see other opportunities. So we're going to open the venue up. Again, like I said, Career Tech is about opportunity.
Right.
And just like AP is about opportunity, just just like even extracurriculars are about opportunity and about developing, you know, finding what you like, finding something that works for you. And um, that that's what it comes down to. Uh, now going back, first question. Um, if you look at, if you look at the the rubric, there's a standard there that says, what's the growth potential in that job? And what's BLSA, the potential growth? And if it's not there, we got to ask ourselves, i- is this a local thing? Um, is this something that maybe nationally isn't growing, but is growing locally? Or is this something we need to go, this doesn't work? We've got, we've got to find something else. And again, because we're doing students a disservice if we roll them out the door with something that's useless.
Great, yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, couple questions. Cal, you went to Orange, right?
That would be high school.
Okay, I just want, I'm just checking. Okay. Question I had was, you mentioned Shaker Heights, or you mentioned Shaker and Warrensville because they're part of a consortium. To my knowledge, Shaker doesn't house any facilities and Warrensville has a class, correct?
That is correct at this point, yes.
Um, but we do get reimbursable? What, so I guess two components. What percent of our overall CTE students are coming from Shaker and Warrensville?
A very small percentage. It uh, it's less than 1%.
Okay, so really pretty much they're part of our consortium, they have it available, they're really not utilizing it.
Right. I would say that's a fair statement.
In that case then, since it's such a small fraction of our our student enrollment, what do we, is it transportation? Is it perception? Is it market? What's the, why aren't they utilizing it?
That's something I need to find out.
Okay.
And I'm working on that.
Okay.
And according to those superintendents, it's marketing.
Okay.
I'd say that's a big deal.
Then in this, in this building, what pers, uh, how much, how much square footage do we have that's unallocated that we could use for CTE expansion?
In this particular, this particular building itself, I, you might want to ask me that in two years.
Okay.
Because in two years, all of everything but AutoTech will be over at the new building.
What, I guess in currently, what during the, during our shell game of moving stuff around, what is, what what CT do we still have in this building right now?
We currently have cosmetology.
Okay.
Clinical health, AutoTech and Pharmacy Tech.
Okay, so we pretty much have a full, everything that was here before is still here.
Plus AutoTech.
Plus Auto. Okay. Um, then I get, in looking at um, programs for the future or for expansion of programs, what, what are the criteria? Because I I remember, uh, a member of the community gave me a list of all the different, what programs were different systems. And I put it onto a spreadsheet so I could look at it. And it was interesting to see that we, the folks were advocating for some programs that were only a few, few systems had. And other ones had a number, there were some programs we didn't, we currently don't have, that a number of other programs did. I'm using districts, I should say. And we, and there wasn't a lot of advocacy for that. So I was curious, is what, you know, is it because people, it certainly counts? Is it what people are clamoring for the most? Or is it, what would you anticipate utilizing as a criteria by which we would expand programs?
Local and and national market needs. For example, and I'll toss this out there because it's it's something that's unlikely to happen, plumbing. There's really no plumbing program in the area. But there's a huge need. When's the last time you waited less than three days for a plumber? There's a huge need for plumbers, but there's a a perception problem with kids getting kids into a plumbing program. So while there's a huge need, would would that program ever ever be filled? That's the question. We'd have to overcome quite a bit to get that filled. I would love to see that because I've never met a poor plumber.
Well, that goes to the, and the grid I put together there, I was surprised that, you know, stuff in building trades, there was only a handful of schools had of it. To me, that seemed like something that there was a, Lakewood years ago, I remember an article in the newspaper about Lakewood's uh, building trades program. And I was thinking that, you know, I was so surprised that we haven't, and I believe the, in the middle schools years ago, we had where you built like a little uh, part of a house with, they rolled it around. And I was sort of surprised that we had nothing, or didn't appear to have something comparable to in our, in our portfolio. So I was curious as to, you know, what sort of the criteria is going to be going forward?
Again, it's going to be what, local market and national market. Now, construction is a huge area. I don't care if you're an electrician, a plumber, uh, construction tech, it it really doesn't matter. Those programs are going to be fully subscribed because right now, there's a need. That any, any, anything that requires a skill, there there is a need right now. There, the workforce is aging. The workforce is getting to the point where they're retiring and saying, you know what, we've done our time. And there's no one to replace them, whether they be masons or plumbers or um, whatever, or mill rights. There's just no one there to replace them.
And and then within our current portfolio, which of the, which, what programs are we, are we? we, are we, we have some that obviously are oversubscribed. Which are the ones that we're having, which ones are, that's a challenge to get our numbers up?
That's, well, one of those, one of the programs that we have, we're having a challenge with numbers right now is going to, is, is our video production program. And that's because we've had some staff turnover. And, and that's going to happen. One of the number one determiners, whether or not a program is subscribed, fully subscribed, oversubscribed, undersubscribed, and one of the number one things is not whether or not there's a job, it's not whether or not it's easy or hard, it's the instructor.
Right, yeah.
And that's, and so if there's no one there to provide stability, then that's like, no, we've got a great person in there right now. She's going to have to grow the program. She's going to have to flip the switch and, and take it from, from, from zero to hero. It's going to be on her to grow it. But, so I don't think, saying a program undersubscribed is necessarily going to be a fair, but there's growth, there's room for growth in all programs right now, even in Cos. I'd love to add another section of Cos. That'd be great.
When I think going to like what Cal's, I think the issue of having, and we're seeing it partly in the design of the, the building, is to have CTE, it's not in its own separate wing, or it's off, it's really right there in the middle of the building, is the, I think the ability to survey, to take some of the classes. I guess the issue is that it's a two-years and you're locked into the, are you locked into CTE? Or can, if I'm not looking to get a certification in a program, but I still want to take the classes? Is that?
There's a provision for that, for example, senior-only programs, those kind of things. But if, if, let's, let's assume for a moment our programs are subscribed, fully subscribed. And I've got 25 girls going from junior college to senior Cos. I wouldn't want to bump one of those juniors out.
Right.
But if I've got open space, there's no reason why we couldn't put someone in for half a year. But you can't move into a senior program. That's not going to happen unless it's a senior-only program. Which, for example, a teacher preparation class, that would be a senior-only because you can do teacher prep, teaching professions. And that would be example of a senior-only class.
Well, the, because the reason I mentioned is there were, I remember taking drafting when we still had drafting. And that was an interesting course. But I wasn't going into that, but it was, I know, of course, that was a long, long time ago, and the course structure is different. But the point being, I would agree with Cal, is the ability for students who are not necessarily immersed in the CTE program to, I don't want to say audit, but take stuff, hey, that sounds interesting, let me try it. I think that'd be excellent.
There's a provision for that, actually. There's foundations classes that are now required to be offered. And we're going to be offering all of the full-sledded foundations classes as well. For example, I can't believe there's no CAD here.
Yeah, that's what, exactly, yeah.
And so there's a great fit for CAD and engineering and manufacturing.
Eric, anything?
I just had a bit of a follow-up to Cal's question as well, which is, in terms of the consortium, and for those who are just now kind of coming on board to figure out what the consortium is, is, and the fact that those numbers seem low right now, is there, so what is the advantage in us pushing for that, in staying part of the consortium and pushing to increase those numbers? Is it so that we have more courses? Is it so, I mean, what's, what's in it for us as a district, I guess?
It's opportunity. Again, if I, I'm landlocked here, for all intents and purposes. I've, I've got no room really to grow. Even when I get to the new building, I've done, physically, with the exception of this space here that I may be able to use, I'm landlocked. So if I could utilize space at Warrensville, if I could utilize space at Shaker, then there's opportunities there. Plus, you're going to get exposed, kids are going to get exposure to, to, to different staff. They're going to get exposure to, to a different climate to a certain extent, depending on where you go. And that's just going to make us stronger as a district. If we have, are able to share resources, I know that year, a few years ago, they recommended that districts begin to find a way to pool their resources and share resources. And that, what better way to do that than be able to share staff across districts? So I think it'll make us a stronger district by giving us opportunities to bring their kids here, our kids there, and utilize some of the resources they're not using.
Ron, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. I apologize for being late, but I'm always interested in how we put together the Business Advisory Committee. And I'm sure you said something about that while I was not.
No.
I'd like to hear your thoughts on the Business Advisory Committee.
The Business Advisory Committee, for those who don't know, is an overarching committee that's supposed to drive or to approve the overarching program for career and technical education. Right now, we're in the process of reconstituting that. And I've seen, I've solicited names from the working group and from essentially everyone I can think of to give me an idea of who that would be on that committee itself. I'm going to go through a review and vetting process of that. It's going to be across the board. It's going to be large industry, small industry, sole proprietorship. It's going to be those, no more than 15 members. Anything bigger than that's unwieldy. And it's going to reflect what we have in this Tri-Hights Consortium as far as industry, as far as service industries as well.
Well, a follow-up is, what role do the three boards of education play in that advisory committee?
Typically, none. Typically, they don't, their, their, their job is not to, to do that. Your job is to oversee the daily operations of, or their job is to oversee the operations of Career Technical Education. Now, if you're volunteering, are you volunteering? So again, it's important that they stay informed, but they're to oversee programming, they're oversee and approve new programs, to recommend new programs, to provide advice. That's why they're there. They're not to govern. They're to, to provide advice and direction. Because they're the ones who supposedly have their pulse, their finger on the pulse of what's going on in the business community.
So you got three different boards. How, how do you, you make presentations to each of them?
Not yet. I'm working on that. I've got a, a meeting scheduled with, I've already met over at Warrensville, and I'm on the calendar to get in to see Superintendent Jolly, and I'm working to get, Dr. Dixon's working to get me over to Shaker. So.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yes. We'll be taking a brief tour now. Mr. Porter has not asked for this caveat, but I will do this for him. He's not ready yet. It's not his fault. We're working on, working through the punch list right now to get the, the lab finished. It's beautiful. It's fantastic. But it's kind of like showing your house when you're not expecting guests. So please, appreciate and marvel at the wonderful things. And anything there that doesn't look wonderful, it's not his fault. So thank you very much for the opportunity tonight. And I, I thank you so much for talking, listening to the kids. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We actually have one piece of business that we need to take before we can adjourn and go to any kind of a tour. Do you want to?
Yes, recommendation to approve the resolution to waive Career Tech training for students in grade seven and eight until 2014 and 15, I'm sorry, 2015 and 16 school year.
Any questions or comments after our presentation? I think it was explained. Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Koval.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Koval.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.